Great, thank you. Okay, so good morning, everyone. It is 8:04 a.m. And I just need to run through the, do a roll call so just make sure, see who's here and that we have a quorum. So Carrie, you did the opposite. You were unmuted. There you go. I'll take the okay as present.
Hear me?
Yeah, hear you now.
Okay.
Okay. So Eric?
Here.
Scott?
Present.
Daisy?
Here.
And myself, Sonia, I am present. So there are five of us this morning. We have a quorum. And we can begin our meeting. So first up, we have our pledge. If we could do a screen share, if everyone could please just unmute and recite with me. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic, where it stands. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, um, so first up on the agenda, we have an action item, which is the approval of resolution to approve high-risk sports. And Dr. Bannal, I'll let you speak to this
Thank you.
with Dean. And also, if you could, would it be possible either for you to read and/or screen share the resolution just so I could read it? Just because I, I print out the agenda, I didn't print out the resolution to read it. So if someone could just read it
Yes.
as well.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask Lauren, Lauren's gonna, or Jim is gonna screen share. There it is, the resolution. And would you like me to read it first, Sonia?
Please.
Or do you want to make some comments?
Yeah, go ahead. Read the resolution first, and then you and Dean can speak to it.
Okay, perfect. Resolution, whereas the New York State's reopening guidance for sports and recreation activities categorizes sports/activities as lower risk, moderate risk, and higher risk. And whereas on January 22, 2021, Governor Cuomo announced that sports categorized as high-risk sports, including wrestling, basketball, ice hockey, competitive cheerleading, et cetera, will be permitted as of February 1, 2021, as permitted by the local health department. And whereas on February 2, 2021, the Putnam County Department of Health issued its guidance on high-risk school sports in Putnam County. And whereas effective February 2, 2021, and until otherwise indicated, student athletes are permitted to participate in K-12-sponsored sports categorized as higher risk in Putnam County, provided the specific requirements of the February 2, 2021 Putnam County Department of Health guidance was met. And whereas Putnam County Department of Health requires each Board of Education or the superintendent to approve or certify the school district's participation in each higher-risk sports. Now therefore, the Brewster Central School District Board of Education hereby approves the participation in the following high-risk winter sports for the 2021, 2020, 2021 winter season. Sport, boys' basketball, level varsity JV, 9, 10, 11, 12. Sport, girls' basketball, varsity JV, 9, 10, 11, 12. Sport, boys' hockey, ice hockey, varsity, 9, 10, 11, 12. Girls' ice hockey, varsity, 9, 10, 11, 12. Competitive cheerleading, varsity, 9, 10, 11, 12. Wrestling, varsity, JV, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. And Ms. Masika, can I make a few comments before the board takes any action? And then I'll pass, pass to Mr. Barado.
Yes, because we haven't even motioned a second for our own discussion yet. So you, you and Dean can both share at this time.
Thank you, thank you. So I want to thank the Board of Education to take, for taking time this morning to hold this special meeting for this purpose. Also, I want to just point out that it was imperative for the safety of all of our students and staff that we carefully review all directives that came to us on February 2 from the Putnam County Department of Health, the county executive. All of the county executives got together in the region to put together very, very important directives that we needed to follow for high-risk sports. In addition, the review of the district medical director was made after we were able to verify everything with the Putnam County Department of Health. Our medical director reviewed everything as well, in addition to the board's attorney reviewing all documentation to make sure that we were following through appropriately. Our athletic director, Mr. Dean Barado, is here. He will be holding an information session this evening for all athletes and for parents to go through all the documents and also to review all the directives and to also make sure he answers any questions that any families or students or student athletes might have. So Mr. Barado is also with us this morning to help answer any questions. And Mr. Barado, did you want to add anything at this time?
Dr. Bannal, you hit the nail right on the head. So you've described exactly what we've been going through as far as the getting, receiving documents, speaking to the appropriate parties to ensure the health and safety of our student athletes and to make sure that, you know, we satisfy any questions that our community members and families have. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, thank you both. And so if I may have a motion on this action item, please?
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Carrie, thank you. And a second?
This is Eric, I'll second.
Okay, great. Eric, thank you. Okay, so the board can now discuss, ask questions and comment on this item. But first, I would actually like to ask Carrie to share with the board the emails that did come in regarding this item. And just for the community that's on there at our board meetings, and this is just a special meeting for this particular topic, but we always do allow opportunity for the community to email the board at BOE, it's BOE@brewsterschools.org. It reaches the board and the superintendent, and you can share thoughts that we will then share at the board meeting publicly as they relate to any action item or anything else in general. So at this time, Carrie does have a couple emails that we did get on this topic. So if you want to just share what came in.
Sure. We received three emails. One was just thanking the board for scheduling today's meeting and noting that individuals hope that the board approves high-risk sports for the winter. We also received an email asking the board not to approve high-risk sports, referencing, referencing the need for masks and social distancing in order to decrease the spread of the virus. That email also made the, you know, asked the question of if it's not safe for board meetings to be in person, you know, how is it safe for high-risk sports for kids? And I'll just respond to that point. Our board meetings have been in person. If the school is in session and kids are in the schools, then we are in person. So we have, you know, if it's safe for the kids to be in school, it's certainly safe for this board to meet in person. So we have done that. Today's meeting's not in person because it was on short notice and at 8 o'clock in the morning. Um, and then the third email that we received asked a few questions. It asked, it was received before the meeting was scheduled for this morning and asked the board to, to have a special meeting to vote on the winter high-risk sports. And then there were just some specific questions. One questioned who is allowed to take the athlete's temperature. So the athlete's temperatures are taken before they enter the gym or the workout room or whatever it is they're doing. They have to have their temperature taken, which was done in the, in the fall as well. So the question there was who's authorized to do that? And with the thought that if coaches and other staff are allowed to do it, it may make scheduling practices easier as opposed to having to schedule that around an administrator if that's who has to admit, do the temperatures. So the first question is who, who's doing the temperatures? Another question was about the health screener, which we have to fill out, all athletes fill out every day whether they're in school or not, if they're going to participate in a sport. And just questioned when it has to be done by, if it has to be done by 10:00 in the morning. You know, why it has to be done so early. And the third is just a question about schedules for planning purposes and when those schedules may be available to parents and athletes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. So Mr. Barado, I'm gonna respond first if you don't mind. I just want to, to answer those questions. And all of this will also be covered this evening when Mr. Barado does his presentation. He has a Zoom meeting tonight. But just for the, for the question that Mrs. Cunningham is sharing from the email, temperature checks, health screening, has to be, all of that is directed to us from the Putnam County Department of Health and our medical director. We have to follow the protocols that they give us. So that, that, that will be, you know, I hope this individual will join the Zoom meeting tonight so they get even more clarification on any other questions that they might have. And Coach, do you have anything about schedules you want to talk about?
Well, first of all, Bosie's, to my knowledge, at this time, they, their schedules for any sport are not ready. So we're talking game schedules for planning purposes. The schedules, according to the last information, a meeting that I had on Wednesday or Thursday, they were purged from the system. They are in the process of reevaluating them. Obviously, the increased time with health guidance has put dates in disarray. So that has been a problem for all of us as far, you know, a challenge for all of us for planning purposes. The other thing I would say for individual practices, I do have a draft schedule. It does involve cleaning in between each time that a, a team is in the floor. That's under direct of Mr. Linius and Mr. Friar. So we insist upon that as far as getting extra cleaning, and we'll, we'll get a schedule out once we have approval for teams and everything is, you know, under the board's consideration for approval, and we'll, we'll solidify a schedule. We understand.
Thank you.
And just a follow-up question to that. So if the board should approve the resolution and then the coaching staff, would some sort of, I'm assuming something will go out to the parents, the, the community today before, even before the Zoom meeting tonight, just for whoever can perhaps practice already this evening?
Certainly, we'll, we'll, we'll draft, we'll write a letter. We will put out that whatever the board's decision is for whatever, for, for each and every individual's sport, you know, as your consideration. And we will do the best we can. We will provide practice times. We'll do the best we can to get people going this afternoon. We will do the absolute best we can. We've got wheels in motion. We just gotta, gotta see what we can do.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Who else on the board has some questions about this, concerns or thoughts they'd like to share or ask?
I think I was just gonna ask for wrestling. I think there were some additional requirements for wrestling than were required for other sports. And is that, are we able to meet all of those requirements laid out in the guidance?
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. That's a good question. And Dean, just let me answer real quick, and then I'll pass the baton to you. Wrestling was one of the sports that was very carefully looked at. A lot of questions. There are some districts that are doing wrestling. There are some districts that are not doing wrestling. There are some districts that are modifying the way that wrestling works. So I'm gonna ask Coach to jump in right now.
Thank you, Dr. Bannal. Yes, you're, you're completely accurate. There are concerns. Dr. Bannal and I have met with Dr. Casero as a group or as a duo here last week discussing that. There was a question about mask use in wrestling, and absolutely positively, we are in favor and we're going to require mask use. Dr. Casero did not think that there would be a choking hazard. He also gave us information that it's being successfully accomplished in other states. We talked about the cleaning procedures. We talked about the importance of continually cleaning airflow in and out of the room, using a different set of mats for each practice, splitting the group of, the team of wrestlers in half and practicing for an hour, an hour, hour and a half, stop, clean the mats, bring the second group in. So we, we've talked about a lot of different things with that. And as Dr. Bannal has also pointed out, some, some districts are doing, working on wrestling, some are not, and some are actually modifying, as she said, and that, and that modification would be doing a week or whatever determined time of individual moves, then doing a week or predetermined time of practicing within their team and then seeing how everything goes because of the concerns with the sport, and then make a determination if they will be able to successfully wrestle with another school. So those are all things that have been out in the Section 1 wrestling community.
Thank you, Dean.
I just had one other question or maybe, but I know there's, if a child or an athlete has had COVID, they're requiring a cardiac screening. And I know, obviously, we can't disclose, I'm not asking anybody to disclose individual kids, but do we have that situation? Because it did strike me that not every kid may have the ability to go and have a cardiac screening and, you know, within the timeframe or there's costs associated with that. So I didn't know if that was anything that was impacting any particular kid or group of kids we have.
Okay, Coach, I'll let you answer.
Sure. So thank you, Ms. Cunningham. That is definitely a concern of Dr. Bannal's and myself. We needed, we, we had a, we've been working on a policy or like a return-to-play protocol, similar to the concussion return-to-play protocol. And when we implemented the concussion return-to-play, it took six months. So we're trying to do this in, you know, in six weeks. So that's been a stumbling block. Dr. Casero's been working on it with us. The cardiac clearance, we do have individuals who we have concern for, yes. All of those individuals have been called. We, it took a little while to get clarifying information. And yes, the concern around the clarifying information was exactly as you presented, the cost and the challenges that it would take for a family to get an appointment as quickly as possible and the cost. We wanted to make sure that we, we, you know, we could do that for the families. So that's one reason why we wanted to, we really had a, the clarifying piece in that was very important to us. And, you know, that, that, that took us a lot longer than we, we had hoped to get clarifying information on. Dr. Casero was very helpful as usual with us.
Thank you, Dean. And that was a very clear directive that came from the county executive.
I have one other one. I know that there's no spectators at any events as per the, I think, the section rule. So do we have the ability to livestream? I know we did that for away games in the fall when you couldn't go to away games. Do we have the ability to do that for our various sports?
Well, there's two things on that, Mrs. Cunningham. Thank you. The one, if we had an outdoor event that, you know, we could certainly have outdoor spectators. The spec, the section has not, is not going to permit indoor spectators. However, for a senior night, they would allow a parent to come in or a family member, two family members to come in and honor their senior. And then if they wanted to stay for the game, that would be a decision, excuse me, that would be based upon our district philosophy. As far as streaming events, we have been working on this. We've looked at the best cost-effective measure for the district. And Mr. Trelor has been working with us. He's got a program that he and I have discussed that we've kind of put the wheels in motion for, and we just have to, we're looking forward to using maybe a practice or two to kind of, you know, have somebody in the gym and stream it up to my office, et cetera, et cetera. So that is a work in progress. We think, like I said, we have the most cost-effective measure for that. It's very important to our community and families. So we have been working on that, yes.
And actually, I'm just gonna add to that about the, the live streaming. And we're going to have it, it's on tomorrow night's agenda for the full board meeting to discuss live streaming and go into that a little, in a little more detail and possibly also for board meetings. So there'll be a little more information on that tomorrow. So yeah.
And I just want to add that we're very fortunate that the Board of Education will be able to do that. Not every district can livestream. So we're fortunate for the kids and the families.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so who else is on here today? Does anyone else have any questions? Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't want, but I did see, I saw White Plains just joined some type of streaming service. It's a sports streaming service, I guess, that a lot of the Westchester schools are starting to use. I guess it's a proven system, but knowing it, Westchester is probably much more costly than something we're trying to implement. But I did have a couple of questions, but I firstly want to say the state documents, the county docs, everything specifically says, when we're talking high risk, this, it's not high risk. These are not considered safe sports. And I get the whole piece that our kids need to play and they need an outlet, mental health, and seniors losing stuff. This is my second senior that's graduating in a pandemic. So, so I get that piece. But not considered safe. I mean, I just want to put that out there first. I saw the information that you had just discussed about the, the physical piece. If I could follow up on the cardiac screening, are we saying it's done? Or is it something we're going to require?
I can answer that. We, we have called each individual parent. Dr. Casero has given me instructions on what to say to the parent, and we've expressed what needs to be done. As far as our return-to-play protocol, the attorney sent me the, and we, we had it ready to go, but then we wanted to make sure with the, with the new guidance that our, our documentation was in line with what the new guidance had said. So the attorney sent it back to me this morning. I opened up my email and I was there. So I will be reviewing that today. And, you know, we'll get it to policy. We'll get it to the board to review as quickly as we possibly can.
And, and Mr. Seaman, I want to just respond to the one thing you said about that these are not considered safe. And I'm glad you made that point because that was why it was so important for us to move through this very carefully and methodically. The information is always constantly changing. So that is why we wanted to make sure that we vetted out everything before we came to the board. So thank you for that question.
Yeah, because, you know, that's what also I'm hearing. It's like, you know, how come we're behind other districts? Well, just what you said is the reason we're behind. And the state was in charge of everything, and then they punted to the county, and then the county punted to the schools. So we were the first school to open. So I really, you know, maybe I'm just cranky in the morning. I don't like to hear that, you know, we're doing something, okay, we're keeping the schools open. We're trying to get IEP kids in. We're trying to get dual-language learners in. We're trying to get all the, everybody back in. So if the sports have to wait a day or two, you know, I'll sound a little nasty. I'm sorry, you know, it's gonna take a day or two to do it right. And I'd rather, you know, I don't want expediency over, you know, doing the right thing. And I haven't had my tea yet, so.
And
I saw the
Mr. Seaman, can I, can I interrupt? Can I interrupt you? I need, can I just make a couple, just a couple more points? And I'm just having my coffee this morning, too. And I'm glad that you mentioned those many things. And I just want everybody to know also that we are, the safety of our students and staff is our first priority this year. It's our main goal. It's a board goal. But with that said, I also want to point out that we are also exploring ways for our theater program to, at the high school, for the kids to put on a play in a very safe way, that we've, we've looked at that with Dr. Casero. So we're thinking about all of our kids. I know we have a lot of parents on this morning because we're worried about each and every one of them, no matter what activities they're involved in. So we're trying to make sure we, we do this for, we're worried about them being, being isolated, being alone. We don't want them to be depressed. We want them to be social and be around other, other children. So we are trying very, very hard to make sure that we're looking into other, other areas as well. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, so I think, what, Brewster Spelling Bee, I think they're doing, and I was sort of, and my daughter's always on these Zoom calls with her clubs and stuff. So, and I know they're going out of their way to try to help. I did see the note from Mr. Barado with all the information about all the things that we need to do. You know, the risk communication, the code of conduct, the fact, all those things, you know, so, and the meeting tonight will definitely help. Yeah, but I mean, and not to harp, but it does point out in, you know, these risks documents, the parents and the students are taking on 100% risk. God forbid anything happens. I mean, and that sounds like it's a very drastic item, but once again, these are state mandates, county mandates, you know, we don't really have a choice. I did want to follow up on some of the individual sports. I see most of them are, you know, nine through 12. Three or four times in the documents, they specifically call out wrestling. I, I know a lot of kids that wrestle. I, I know, I'm just overly concerned about the risks related to it. Also, since we involve, now we're eight through 12. So now we're bringing the middle school into the sports piece. I don't know, they need an outlet, but God forbid there's an outbreak. And wrestling is one of the higher, from the reporting, I've seen wrestling is one of the higher items, obviously, that spreads. If there is going to be a spread, it's going to be related to that sport. And now we're spreading into not just the high school, we're bringing the middle school into this. I just would like to know the reasoning why, you know, the other sports don't have eighth grade, but wrestling does have eighth grade.
Coach, can you jump in?
So the athletic placement process is a program that a student athlete can participate at a higher level at. This student, the, the eighth grade piece is for individuals who have been on the team in the past and have qualified through the athletic placement process. At the time that we made, that we're making decisions, someone has been on the team already. It's been very difficult in our mind to ask that, to ask those individuals not to be on the team again. That is the only activity right now that has someone quote-unquote potentially grandfathered in. We have not participated in that program, athletic placement process for any other activity at this time. That's just, you know, it's a very, it's a very hard decision for our consideration. Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Seaman.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just reading through my scratch. I wanted, like I said, once again, we need to clarify, you know, that, I hate to say this, you know, no spectators at practices and any practice and games. I mean, it's, it's terrible. I mean, I remember last year, the outside sports, you know, we got two tickets to the home games. Nobody could go to the away games. So if we could do this streaming thing, I mean, that would be incredible. I did have a problem, actually, today, my wife just had to leave because my daughter got picked for the random selection for the COVID testing. So that can get our percentages up. So God forbid there's a breakout in the area, the schools can stay open. Is there any thought or requirement that as part of athletes being involved in the playing that they're required? I mean, it's not like the college sports, there's, there's not an option. They're required. They, they can't say, they can't opt out, they can't do alternate things. They have to, because we have to know that the numbers are low to keep the sports going. I mean, is there any thought to that?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Seaman. That's a great question. And Dean, if I miss anything, let me know. Um, there is no requirement for COVID testing. We are one of the districts in Putnam County that are doing the screening, as you mentioned this morning. Your daughter was called. Thank you for sharing that. So there is not a requirement. The, the concern that superintendents have is that there is, we, we want to make sure we have enough COVID testing for the screening we're doing for the district. So we're hoping with, and I don't want to be political, but with the new administration in the White House, it seems like there's more supplies coming. So if we are in a position where we can get more supplies, because the pipeline is pretty dry right now, we will, we will definitely look into that. Or we can also look into, you know, budgetary-wise, we're in a tough situation. Now, the tables have turned a little bit. Victor will share more about that. So there is a possibility we can maybe purchase some, because there are districts that were able to purchase their own tests, not just get them from the state and the county departments. So, um, right now, we're going to be relying on our district COVID screening to give us the overall umbrella. Dean, did I miss anything? I think that was, that pretty covers, pretty much covers.
I, yeah, you're good, Dr. Bannal. Thank you. That's, we've discussed that several times.
Okay.
If that's, you know, I think that Carrie Care covered a lot of the stuff also. I just want to also follow up, but I'm sure we'll hear from Victor as we always do. I mean, this is a giant cost consideration at school. And not only was the school doing all the things I mentioned, but there's anywhere from a $2 to $4 million hole that's gonna be happening. So to ask the school to go out of the limo on a lot of things, oh, just throw some more money on it. That's not the point, you know? So is the school taking its time and doing the right thing? You know, it's, um, okay, I think I'm just rambling now. Okay, thank you for the information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, and Victor will be going over budget tomorrow again at our, our full meeting. We are in budget season. So he'll be covering some things. And I, I think there is a little bit of good news and hope in there, so.
Yep, he has, he has some pixie dust.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Did Eric or Daisy want to share anything about, on this topic? Or you guys are good?
I had a question. Is there going to be a limit up to how many players per sport? As previous years or what's the thought on that?
Okay.
No, I mean, you know, that, that's a very good question. It's something I've thought about. We're going to, you know, I think, you know, we're going to have to really look at each sport. As effectively as possible. I'm not trying to give you an administrative answer by any stretch of the imagination, but I think we have to look. At the numbers, we have to look at the, the skills of our individual athletes coming out, that they can safely participate in the activity that they choose. I don't think that's any different than a usual year. Certainly, you know, the lack of having an opportunity to do anything outside of. School, inside of school is a consideration, the short windows are consideration, the mental health, all those pieces. So that will be, you know, that's going to be a discussion point for the coaches. I mean, I think the other thing that we have to consider, the window is short. We have a February vacation. You know, it is a lot of factors that, you know, trying to get this going as quickly as possible. That's a good question. I don't necessarily have the best answer. For you, but that, that's something we're going to look at very carefully, speaking with the coaches, no doubt about it.
So could we clarify, just because I know for me, it's a little unclear. As to, we may be able to start some practices this afternoon.
Um, yeah, I mean, certainly the timing piece is going to be difficult, is going to, is going to prevent a challenge, you know? But the fact that it matters is some teams are able to mobilize. We've opened up registration. There are teams that have. More people approved maybe than others. I haven't necessarily looked at all the individual pieces that I would do on a typical. First day or prior to that to make sure. But we'll, we'll make sure with the coaches and the athletic department staff, who's ready to go, who's not? I mean, if, if a team is ready to go safely, or we have a good number, amount of numbers, and I say safely, I mean, you know, the daily health screen are filled out, the, obviously, the physical approvals. And we have a good number of participants that are ready to go as we would have on a usual first day, then we'll begin. If not. We will begin the next day or the day after. That would be no different than any other typical day, a first day. So, I mean, you know, certainly we have the cleaning supplies, we have procedures down, we have coaches on board with it. We've talked about it already. So that piece, when we were already scheduled to meet today with several programs anyway. So that was, you know, just in preparation for the meeting. So those meetings are still going to be held. So we will do the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Sonia, I, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank the administration, obviously, for all the hard work and balancing out sort of the urgency to get these. These seasons started along with the idea that, you know, we have to do it safely. We have to allow the, the athletes and the parents to know. That if they do decide to, to accept that risk. That we have done everything that we can possibly do to minimize the risk as possible, as much as possible, not only to them, but to the community at large. And, and that is an extremely difficult balance to walk. And I know that it's been, it's, it's being done very thoughtfully and very, with a lot of contemplation. So I just want to really thank everybody for their hard work and, and look forward to hopefully getting the, the athletes, you know, back to work as quickly and as safely as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grotzner. Appreciate it. And I have to thank, I have to thank Mr. Barado for, he has been working diligently. From the start of this pandemic with me to make sure that we do everything appropriately. And, and that's 24/7. So thank you, Mr. Barado too. Thanks, Mr. Grotzner.
Thank you both.
Carrie, you were going to say something?
I was just going to add to Eric's point that the district has done and will do and has always done what it can. To keep the kids as safe as possible, but the, the athletes themselves and the parents. Have to be committed to this as well. It, it only works if the kids. Do the right thing and help keep their teammates healthy and help keep the season going. You know, the district can only control so much of that. So a lot of work has been put into it and I'm sure the kids are extremely happy or, you know, excited at the prospect of doing this. But it is important that they do their part so we can keep this going.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham.
Okay. Yes, so just a final thank you as well and, and also just for pulling this meeting together. For allowing us to just get going as soon as we can. I know last week was. Insane with, I mean, we saw the, the board did receive a lot of information and it was just a lot of stuff that went on in a very short time. So thank you so much and I am thankful that, you know, we, we, we take the extra steps. To make sure that, you know, we're just going over and beyond from a safety perspective. So thank you. Okay, so if no one else has anything to add or ask, it looks like we can go on to our vote. Okay. So on action item number one, approval of resolution to approve high, high-risk sports. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Daisy?
Yes.
Sonia, myself, yes. So with four, with one opposed, the motion passes four. Four with one opposed. So we are good. Okay, thank you, everyone. And we move on now to action item number two, approval of personnel items. And Dr. Harrington, if you want to just briefly touch on that?
Sure. So these. This consent agenda notes the respective appointments for both the low-risk and high-risk sports for the winter season. The board may recall that on December 15th, we did have a resolution at that point. It was uncertain. If there would in fact be a winter season, but we did appoint. The, we didn't appoint the specific coaches, but we did appoint. The programs itself contingent upon the start of the season. So this is specifically the recommendations for the coaches, all of whom, with the exception of ice hockey, are. Excuse me, instructional staff in the building presently.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion for this item, please?
This is Scott. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Scott. In a second.
This is Daisy. I'll make the second.
Okay, thank you, Daisy. Questions or comments from the board?
And not to. We had previously worked out some type of agreement or something with the bargaining units on whether if we have to go, we don't go. I thought we did that in the, in the past.
I was able to have, we're in the midst of conversations, the BTA presently. To determine what's, hopefully, in the view of both, we, we can reach an understanding of what may be appropriate in the event that. There are instances where the season doesn't. Doesn't finish in its entirety. So we hope to have an agreement worked out and presented to the board in the coming days.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing and hearing none. We can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes. With an unopposed, this motion passes 5-0. Okay. Thank you, everyone. And that's it for us for today, for this meeting. So we will be meeting again tomorrow evening for our, our full agenda. And I just want to take a minute to thank the community members and parents that jumped on here to listen to our meeting as well and join us. Thank you. And you're always welcome to, again, you know, email the board at BOE, well, BOE at brewsterschools.org. And I just need a motion to close the meeting now.
This is Scott. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Scott. In a second.
This is Daisy. Second.
Thank you, Daisy.
Sorry, Eric.
Not Eric. We'll get, you'll jump in there more tomorrow. Okay, all those in favor of closing the meeting, Carrie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes. And that's 5-0. We're good to go. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Happy Monday, everyone.
Have a great day.
Thank you.